Good.
Does Rhonda think she's going to try to reprint those?
Yes, we definitely have a different file.
I was gonna say, I think this is the wrong one.
Yeah, we can bring that back around.
Oh, I see why you're here. Hey, Jessica.
Oh, yes.
Actually, I'm Jess now. This is Jessica.
Oh, hi, Jessica. I talked to you on the phone, Jessica. Okay.
Yep, we got a new name for the old Jessica.
Hi, Jessica.
So, wait, Jess and Jessica? Okay. Okay, I'll deal with that. Have you all still turned when you say Jessica? It's okay. It's okay. There's lots of emails and text messages for you and I, so it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, it is six thirty, so we'll start the work session for March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five for Tonino City Council. We'll let Judy go first. She wanna come up and speak, and we then will go into other items.
Hi, I'm Judy Kreiderman. I'm the secretary of the...
Is the red light or the yellow, orange light there?
It's green.
Green.
Green, yep, green, orange, yellow, red.
I'm the secretary of the Tonino Lions Club, and this is Bob Wicklund, our president, and he is going to speak first.
Good evening. I'm Bob Wicklund, the current president of the Tonino Lions Club, and I'm here in that function to proudly present the city of Tonino a check for five hundred dollars from the Tonino Lions Club, which has been proudly serving the city of Tonino and the local area for more than eighty-five years, if you'll recall from our banners that we have flying whenever we get them up and all the work that we do throughout the years. But for over eighty-five years, the Lions have been proudly serving the city of Tonino. It's our great pleasure to present this check of five hundred dollars to assist with the flags for Sussex Avenue. And additionally, Lions have also agreed to purchase a new stove for the Quarry House, for the one stove oven that had burned up, so the Tonino Lions Club will be replacing it.
One of those new stoves burned up?
Yeah, the element in the oven burned up all the wiring in it, so it costs more to fix than, I think, a new stove. Yes, I will. Sorry, I was...
You may have to go right here.
Thank you very much.
Well, shoot, wait, don't get... Don't leave yet. Wait a minute. I wanted to get one that I could send you. Well, I can't find my... Oh, I mean, my camera. What the heck's going on here? Come on.
I can send you a picture.
No, I was gonna send you the picture.
Oh, this was her camera.
Never mind.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. I appreciate it.
Judy has some more.
So, those of you that have been around for a few years recall that at some point Rhonda and myself were gonna raise money to have a dog shelter in town. And we've been having conversations with Troy and stuff, and he's come up with a great plan. So tonight, I am going to give Dave a cashier's check for fifteen hundred dollars. That's what Rhonda and myself raised through a couple of garage sales, and community members would come up and give us money, family, gate, so there's a start on the dog shelter.
I love it.
And in conversations with the Lions Club, I asked if they would be willing to donate money as kind of a keep the animals safe, keep the public safe. So here is a thousand dollars from the Lions Club also for the dog shelter.
Don't leave yet. Pictures. She wants to get pictures.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Let's go see what those are in picture.
Great. Thank you very much for letting us come.
Okay, the library's nice. Come on, give us some money.
Thank you so much for that. We'll make sure these get to their appropriate place. I'm gonna make a note here.
You all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Okay, on the work session, is there anybody that had anything they wanna speak about? I got some stuff, but if there's anybody that has anything they wanna...
Yeah, actually, I do, and it's because of you. You brought it up at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. We're down at three offices, not counting the chief. We budgeted for...
Three, right, the chief.
Three. We budgeted for four. Where are we gonna get that fourth officer?
Well, we budgeted before, but our budget is not what we thought it was. For one, I spoke to Jason about this last week. We, in our budget, when we budgeted, we estimated a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar starting balance, and when we got to the end of the year, it's actually three hundred and something thousand, which would have put us in a negative, the negative, if we would have spent it all, if we would have spent what we budgeted. So we do not have the money right now to...
But we actually have, we only have two officers and the chief.
Three, totally, yeah. That's what I said at the meeting. Two officers, three total, including the...
That's including the chief.
Would be nice to know this.
All of those likes have... Where are we standing with closing out the two thousand and twenty-four? Can we get an update, please?
Yes, two thousand and twenty-four is probably gonna be a couple more weeks where they were working on finishing up the two thousand and twenty-three audit this week, pretty much. They had to make some changes from the auditor's office, so he's been working on that this week. And we uploaded, I think, the final documents to the state yesterday, I believe, or the day before. So that two thousand and twenty-three should be complete, so he should be back on finishing up the two thousand and twenty-four very soon.
And at that point, we can revisit the budget we passed in December.
Right, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to. I mean, I think we talked about this when we first started, that quarterly, we're gonna need to probably, just because of where we're at with the budget, we're gonna need to do adjustments quarterly, I believe, because we're just so tight, and we didn't have real good numbers when we started out. So, yes, we will bring, hopefully, hopefully, I would like to be able to do it next, the next meeting, kind of, we can get the two thousand and twenty-four completed. We'll know exactly where we're at and be able to update where we're at for two thousand and twenty-five. The, I can tell you right now, I just ran the numbers. That's one of the things I was gonna talk about, so I will just tell you right now. Starting out for two thousand and twenty-five, we've had expenses of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Again, that's a little inflated because we pay so much. That first month, we pay all our insurances and everything, so that amount is, you know, we'll level out a little bit as we go along. But right now, we've had revenue of, as of just a little bit ago, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So if our starting balance that I, we ended up twenty, I think we ended up two thousand and twenty-four with, we would have forty-three thousand, forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars in our, in our general fund account right now. And we may get some more revenue come in these last few days of this month, but that's how close our, that's what I'm telling you. We don't, we don't have the money to, right now, to fill those. So we're gonna have to relook at that, relook at the budget when we get those final numbers for two thousand and twenty-four, and make sure my starting balance that we think we have is correct. That's, yeah, unfortunately, that's where we're at, when we got one point three million dollars in the hole, and we have to pay almost five hundred thousand dollars a year to start paying that loan back. We still do have, just so you know, we did authorize up to five hundred thousand coming from our sewer and water fund. We needed it to carry us through, so this balance gets down to zero. You know, we may have to even say we're gonna pull some more money from, from the sewer and water fund, because we can't, again, we can't be in the negative. That's state law. We cannot be in the negative. So I'm keeping an eye on it every day to make sure we're keeping our nose above water.
The forty-three thousand dollars in the black you project for the end of the year, does that include the thirty thousand dollars IRS penalty we just discovered?
That's part of the other things we gotta look at as well. We, you know, we've got additional audit costs that we paid, we got...
What did, what did he just say? Did you just say what IRS penalty?
We haven't finalized this yet, but we, this is another pickup that we had, just found out recently. And I think, I think I mentioned this, but maybe not. The, we got a notice from the IRS. Didn't I mention it?
No.
You've mentioned it.
I don't know, maybe at the last meeting, and I wasn't here.
The, we got, there's a Form nine forty-one that is, is part of this whole four last years. There's a Form nine forty-one that's supposed to be filed with the IRS. It's part of some of our payroll taxes, federal taxes that you have to pay. We got notice from them that we hadn't, they hadn't, we hadn't provided proper documentation from twenty, I think, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, and that they, interest and penalties were thirty thousand, thirty something thousand, forget the exact number, thirty thousand dollars. We did send them the letter asking if they would forgive, tell them what happened, asking them if they would forgive that error. And they wrote us back a note saying no, they would not. And so I called our attorney to say, hey, what can, is there anything we can do about this to try to resolve it? And he said he's not a tax expert. He, he suggested we reach out to Dale Henn, who's a tax person, to see if there's some other way, other appeal we can do. So we're still working on trying to appeal that.
I think you can, I think you can appeal it, yeah.
We did once, but if there's anything else we can do to try to convince them that this was a, so, it was, and it's kinda complicated.
The payroll taxes were paid.
That's what I understood, that they were paid, but they got, maybe got credited to the wrong accounts or something, and we tried, we straightened in this up.
It can be more than thirty thousand if they haven't been paid.
Probably, 'cause that's a lot.
Yeah, that's just the penalties and interest.
Right.
Yeah, but...
Okay, everything's been paid, and everything's up to date as far as the filing. It's on my list to call them this week, 'cause that's what the city attorney said, because there's no, there's no way we...
Speak up here.
Yeah, they...
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, they would have been here locking the doors.
Yeah.
You owe payroll taxes. That's a, that's a trust. That's something you just don't...
It's paid. Every pay, they're...
Okay.
Anyway, I think that's what we're up, trying to update to allow for electronic, somebody, they suggested to us, we have this payable, automatically transfer it versus sending checks or anything to them. So we're updating, I think, Rhonda told me if I'm the speaking, we're trying to get it, so we can do some kind of bank transfer versus sending...
Yeah, Maria knows. Has she talked to Jack? Is she still there?
Yeah, she's here. But anyway, I think that's what we talked about, is basically setting up a model, like most people pay, most businesses pay. Just click on the link, and it automatically takes it running.
I thought you had to do that nowadays.
Well, this was four years ago that this was happening.
They can't, they can't make everybody do it. A lot of people are not savvy enough to do that, but you can. There is the ability to do that. I know that.
So, yeah, hopefully, next meeting, we can update, but we're, we're running right on a thin line, so I will keep you up to date on where we're at, but...
They also sent us checks for fourteen thousand because I overpaid them. I returned them.
No, it's probably not gonna get, it's probably not gonna get any better with the way things are going with the IRS, but maybe, maybe we'll get lost in the system and they'll forget. They won't.
They don't forget.
So that's where we're at with the, yeah, the budget, and I wish I could tell you more positive, but it's, it's, I, yeah, we're gonna be running right on the edge for, we're gonna get that May.
We'll work it out. We'll work it out. That's all we can do.
And what I think I said in the last meeting is, you know, May, we'll get a bigger chunk, so we'll, we'll get us, lift us up a little bit when we get our property taxes and everything, so it's just getting, getting through this first, first month.
There was no recording of that last meeting, so there, you know.
So you missed it. So anyway, we'll be in a better position in May. It's just getting, to make sure we get to May without being negative is the...
Okay, what else?
Uh, what, anything else from anybody that had any questions? I got a list of stuff that I was going to mention. If there's nothing else from anybody.
Jess, where are you gonna try to talk to him?
Uh, like I mentioned, we're close to getting the two thousand and twenty-three audit completed. We uploaded the changes that were, they asked for to be done a few days ago, so that should be real close to being completed. Next meeting, we're gonna have Jocelyn Bobbitt. She is the person that her son was killed, and she was here when we approved the Gold Star families. She wants to put a bench over at the park. We walked, went over there, and there's kind of a place that would kind of be good on the, there's a bench on one side of the entrance to the pool. And she would like it someplace where people would most likely to use it. So when we were looking at the memorial wall, there's enough room, we think, on the other side of that entrance that we could put it there, but she's gonna be here next meeting. I don't have anything for you tonight, but next meeting, we'll hopefully approve, accepting that donation, and that's, that's one location that she, she suggested, so if anybody has any other thoughts.
Yeah, you know, you just go.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Uh, another one that will be here next week is Amy Evans Harding. She would like to come and just kinda give us an update in what she's seen with Ag Park and some ideas of what we can maybe do to attract business there. So she will be here next meeting to talk about that. I wanted to let you know that the fire department is going through their, I don't know how, how long it is between, but ratings, so fire departments are scored by, they've got a bunch of factors that they are scored on that is going to be starting up here soon for the city, for the fire department. As part of that, they're reviewing our city water plan and our building codes, so I've reached out to Brian Von Kluft and also the, our water department to fill out that information. It's not very, doesn't look like it's real in-depth, but there's some paperwork they need to fill out for that. I'll let you know, our coal storage grant, that's for, for solar and battery storage at the coal storage warehouse was finalized, so that will be moving forward here soon. Should be able to make that building a little more resilient and provide for some cost reduction for utilities. LG, who does our code, our code person reviewer, is retiring, which was kind of the plan when he started, when we brought him on. Brian Von Kluft is taking, will be taking over if the council approves that. We have thirty days, so we'll most likely be bringing a resolution to you next to have Brian Von Kluft become our code reviewer also. That will, we'll bring more to that next week. Briefly, VFW is going to have a Gold Star family dinner, and I think it's probably gonna be af, right after summer, it sounds like, probably the September range. But they're trying to reach out to people, if you know anybody that's a Gold Star family, they're trying to reach out to our community and around our community to find anybody that is a Gold Star family, so they can make sure they get invited to this, so we're trying not to miss anybody, so try to get the word out of you or talking to anybody if there's families here that are the Gold Star families. We'd appreciate knowing about that. Spoke at the chamber meeting last, last week. That went well. Also had Aslan meet there. He did a presentation on the Ag Park and what's going there. I think it was well received. So that was a good, good talk there. Heat pump, the low-income heat pump contract is also completed, so that is moving forward. I don't know, if you're on Facebook, they're doing public outreach, public outreach to the community, so they're having, I think they're gonna have an event at the library where people can come in and learn about the program and how they can qualify. So I've been trying to get that, the word out to people about that, but that'll be a great program for lower income that can save some money on their heating.
Have they set a date for a meeting at the library?
I, I have not seen that yet.
Okay.
There's, they're doing several throughout the county, 'cause it's basically a county-wide program. I think they just did one in, maybe Lacey, I think it was, but I will watch for... Yeah, there is one.
Yes.
We have a...
You have a date?
I can, when I go...
Okay, when you do your, you can...
Let Jessica go. She's gotta leave.
Okay. Jessica, she's got something to say, and she's gotta leave, so you wanna come up and speak? She's gonna speak about that RCO grant that we have on our agenda.
Okay, so, um, the RCO grant, the COAF, for the ballfields, the five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, I'm trying to find the exact, oh, yeah, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. We've got the contract for that, and so I'm just, I know it got on the agenda kinda late, but it's what we applied for, and I'm hoping everybody had a chance to review it. We can go ahead and start on the project, and actually, we already have started on the project, and that there are some items that are okay to do pre-contract, you know, in good faith that you're gonna be signing the contract, and we have already started on those things that are like planning stage kinds of things, like we've had an archaeologist out there do, doing the whole, like, we just went through the whole RCO planning process in another part of the park, and it took a year. And it's, these archaeologists, there's only a couple of them, and now that everybody who's gonna do this grant has to call in the archaeologist to do it, it was gonna become a bottleneck, and so we wanted to start, since it's a pre-contract thing that you can get reimbursed for retroactively, we wanted to get going on it before we ended up in the bottleneck, and it put us outside of our grant window. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure this was before you guys and that you were excited about okaying it.
We're excited about it.
Okay. And then if you have any other questions about anything else, I haven't been here in a while, so I'm here.
I don't know why.
Maybe you can mention something on our agenda also is doing some trail work up on, up on there, so why don't you just talk a little bit about that? So it's, it's very simple contract we're doing with somebody to have to do some work up there, but you can explain better than me.
Yeah, so when we, when we purchased, got the donation from the Angela Bowen Foundation to purchase that property, we were given fifteen thousand dollars extra for incidentals, and then also maybe for a small project leading up to making trails up there. One of the difficulties Dave and I experienced traversing the property was that it's, you can't see the forest through the trees up there. The topography is complicated. There's hills, there's places where you come, and then there's drop-offs. It's just, it's kind of a hot mess up there, to be honest with you. There are very few people who are familiar with that piece of property. Greg Albrecht is very familiar with it. He's lived up there forever and ever, and so he has more or less volunteered to help us kind of chart out where the trails used to be and what would make sense to put in there, 'cause he knows where, where everything is up there. So he has volunteered to do some trail work, and I felt like I didn't wanna take advantage of his, of him and his, use of his, like, tractor, chainsaw, things that you need to actually get through there physically, so this would, like, reimburse him for wear and tear and for gas and things like that. So it's just, it's a little agreement, and it has a whole harmless in it and a little stipend to, to get us through the project a little bit better.
This is money left over from the grant.
Yes, so this is money that we have to spend on this property specifically, and so long as we carry the money, I have to keep reporting quarterly also to Angela J. Bowen. So it's, it's in our interest for just labor to start spending it. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see, I was seeing, I think that's the only things on there that you kind of, you were involved in. It's on the agenda for the night anyway, so...
Yeah, the, the only other thing, and I'll just mention it, 'cause it's great, is that we got the new roof on the Tickner Schoolhouse. So we'll be, that's part of your, probably consented, Jenna, to pay that, and then I'll get reimbursed from the heritage grant, so I'm just, I think it looks good, and it will be lower maintenance. Yeah.
And I think we got somebody, maybe, did we get somebody to volunteer to clean the moss off the roof and gutter work?
Yeah, I've heard we have a volunteer.
We do have a volunteer.
We appreciate you helping us with that. The roof on the other building is looking, got a lot of moss in the gutters, so, yes, Jeff was a volunteer to help us get that done and get those gutters hopefully cleaned and if they need reattached or hopefully whatever we need to do to make that place...
We'll take a look at it. I'll get a, put a contractor eye on it. I'll, I'll come by and talk to, Troy's back? Is he back?
He is.
Come by and, and work out a schedule with you guys, and we'll get that done.
Okay. Also, don't forget Earth Day is coming up, the nineteenth of April, and Family Fun Day is the twenty-first of June. So big events that are, come on out.
And there's a competition with kids, right? The schools...
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's the, and I, and they keep seeming to up the award on that, so it's a worthwhile.
Well, in the last couple of years, Tonino school district has had the most people come out, too. Parents and, and kids.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fabulous event. They're over there, having, Friends of the Park is having a planning meeting right now. I came straight from that to here. So, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, one other thing, I was gonna mention, Judy didn't say anything about this when she presented, said she was, they were gonna buy the new stove. Uh, we're gonna bring back an extension of their contract, and we have a contract with them to be able to use the house, so we're gonna, and for them buying the stove, we'll bring back some, extend that to, they asked us if we had extended it two years, so...
Sure.
I think that's a great deal for them buying a stove and so...
Gee, maybe next week we can get them to buy some cupboards for in there.
They did, just bring, uh, the senior food group brought in a rolling tall, like a cupboard to put in there.
Has it got doors?
Yes, it's got doors on it, so, uh, I think it's something they wanted. They brought it in.
Well, it's just something that was necessary up there. It didn't look finished. Kitchen didn't need it, not look finished, it was open shelter.
Yeah, they got that metal, metal thing out there, but not, so anyway, I, the city was gonna go in there and put it together for them. I don't know if that got done, but it's there, so hopefully that, got put together or will get put together. Let's see, what else?
Well, I wanna ask, did we get our application in to CBDG?
Uh, we, I, we had a meeting with the... We, I, we had a meeting with the, well, I talked with the other cities, and we have a plan. I don't wanna say exactly what it is now, 'cause there's other people that weren't there that will have a voice in it, but there are projects that are, the city didn't put it in, but there's other groups that put in for projects into Taino. Rainier didn't put in anything, and.
I think Yukota, Yelm did.
Yeah, yeah, Yukota had a, and that was part of the discussion with Yukota, but I don't wanna say until we actually, we're meeting in April, and kinda like happened in the past, they all, we all sit down and say where we want the money to go. So I just don't wanna say anything until everybody's had a chance to sit down and agree.
Okay.
But there's projects that are, yeah, significant stuff for Taino. What else? Anything? We can, if you got a half hour, if you guys wanna review on that, the RCO thing.
Would you like to introduce?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna do that.
Is there another Jessica to us?
I was gonna do that and, yes. I, yes. So I don't know if everybody's met her, but this is our new utility clerk.
Come on, please, come on.
Jessica Davis. She's been here a week now, just starting her second week, and I can say I've been here pretty much every day, and it's been a pleasure in the first week to work with her. She is, I think I told you, she's a resident of Taino, so it's, it's great that we have.
Two blocks, it's very close.
I tease her because she's.
Where are the snow days, huh?
Yeah, where's, where's, where?
Like near Rhonda.
Oh.
I was teasing her this morning, asking how her commute was compared to her old one, 'cause she's like two minutes away or something, so.
I don't get lost, so far.
So anyway, I appreciate it. I know it's a big, big learning curve to get up to speed on all the things that that position does, but yeah, so far I've really appreciated the work she's done and how she interacts with our, the people coming in, and so anyway, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, tell them about who you.
I appreciate getting to be a bigger part of the community. I've been here seven years, and I really haven't been, so.
Oh, well, I can think of all kinds of things for you to do.
That works for me.
You, you could've run for, for city council. I could've retired sooner.
Not there yet.
No, we wanna keep her for a little bit longer than that.
We're gonna get some, we're gonna get some community projects first.
I like, I like working with people every day, coming in and out.
Yeah. So once again, I, I appreciate you taking the job, taking the job, and your, yeah, interest in learning and hanging in there while we, while we get through the education process.
Great. Look at, look at, look at Dan, he wants, puts your picture on the page.
Yeah, you're gonna be in the papers.
I'm the least photogenic person on the planet.
Uh-uh, no, 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 that's me.
Thank you.
We do have some time. If anybody, that one RCO was, like you said, that came in kinda last minute for us to get it in there. So if you wanna take some time to thumb through that at all, but more than happy to.
I know that one's good. Jessica says it's good, it's good.
It's kind of a, boy, I looked through it, I read through it. The face sheet basically says what it is, the first couple of pages, and then the, the rest is legalese that, I don't know if you read it, you could.
Check the library up there to do something.
We can do reports. Does anybody wanna read that, or do you want us to do, go into reports? We can get.
First of all, the RCO, are you talking about the schedule here?
The RCO grant.
The big, thick grant you talked about, you said you didn't have. Did you, you got a copy of it?
I do not have a copy of that.
She, I don't think he has a computer. We'll just go through, we'll go through reports right now.
Before we do that, Mayor, we had the checks received for a dog shelter. I haven't heard about a dog shelter. At some point could, could we get more information on?
Yeah, I'll have Troy put something together on it. I don't know, I haven't heard exactly what they have planned either, so before we spend any money.
Well, Judy's been working on it for a long time. I heard Rhonda, working on it for a long time.
About a year and a half or so.
You know.
Rhonda, do you know exactly what they're, kind of, come up here, you gotta get in the microphone.
And please identify yourself. Identify yourself, please.
Rhonda Horns, in the back of this Public Works building, they're gonna, there's an area that's just used for storage, and the kennel up on the hill is no more, so they're gonna clear an area in there to just put a couple kennel, big kennels, and then there's a door that will go outside so the dogs can run in and out. So instead of Jason having to take them home all the time, we can have them down there and.
So there'll be an inside area where they can get out.
Yes, inside, outside. We've been trying to get the money for, you know, like new dog houses, and Judy had mentioned she was gonna make some beddings for them.
Some quills, some dog quills?
Of course. That's Judy.
I know. So that's what that's about, and we've got a lot of the, the materials already, because there's a lot that he can use from the old kennels.
Oh, good.
So hopefully it'll work out, and we can get.
That would be good.
Yeah, and we've all got together and kinda went over what we needed, and then he went to work and looked at the area and then changed the whole plants.
Of course.
That's what it is.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Any other questions? I don't know. You think there'd be flies? I was talking to you too much. Okay.
Have a nice day.
We'll go into reports then.
I think we had to start off TRPC and TPP, whether to report or not. There's two off the list.
I'll mark them off, 'cause I'll forget by the time we get to them. Okay, Chamber of Commerce, anything from them?
No, I didn't hear. I, I must wait a minute, but.
I didn't see anything. He usually sends it to me also.
Or is it true there? Chamber of Commerce.
He was the speaker. Aslan, Aslan was the speaker. That's pretty much all it was there.
Yeah. EDC, yeah, they did come.
You were at the study meeting, I was, so.
Study, I didn't, I couldn't make that one. It sounds like it's a good meeting.
Yeah, it was the largest turnout that we had, and it's gonna, there's a picture of everybody that attended the meeting.
It was on Facebook.
Speaking to the mic.
It was on Facebook.
Rhonda, Rhonda's not there to yell at me.
She's giving you a dirty look, so.
I wasn't looking, so I couldn't tell.
So what was, what was, it sounded like it was a pretty good speak.
What's really nice is when, it holds two-hundred-and-sixty-two people, depending on how you sit. You know, so if you're doing a classroom-type thing, you're gonna get more, as many people as you want in there. But then you get the round tables, the slow, you can set up for dinners and all kinds of stuff. So, and what's really nice is that there's no echo when somebody is speaking.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
And they have their audio, video, their audio system, did they use their video? 'Cause I heard it's really good, yeah.
The TV was going, the giant TV that they had, had everything connected in just fine. The speakers were fine. It was, it was, it's a nice facility.
Where was this?
At the Ag Park.
At the Ag Park.
Okay.
So when, the next time somebody asks, is there a place to have an event like a wedding or something, we know where to send them.
Stone City Event Center, yeah. Any questions on that one? Arch Commission?
No.
Nothing? VCB, I will say, I think I got a, we didn't pay them this year. We, before we even did the budget, we had talked to, said we were gonna spend the five thousand, but they are updating, I think, their booklet with our information still, so that's very nice that they're still doing that with, without us paying them. Library?
There you go.
Hello, Nate Ramos with Timberland Regional Library. So a few things, our staff did ask if we could have the trash cans outside the library. There's like a trash can right outside by the door, just if it could be emptied out regularly, like when a normal cleaning crew goes through and empties out the trash, just because it, it's a little bit easier, kind of in the, their workflow versus us having to then go get gloves and get, get everything and dispose of everything.
Who picks up the garbage? Isn't it Lemay?
I, I think it's just a regular trash can that sits up, not the, not the big one that we put the stuff in. It's just the regular, for people to throw their.
Yeah.
Whatever in, yeah, a regular, yeah.
So then what would we do with it?
Put it in their big dumpster, I think. They have a dumpster, I remember another.
Yeah, we have a dumpster. It's, it's, it's just a matter of, when we do it, it just takes a little bit extra staff time, whereas when you're just like in the perp, like, you're actually cleaning and they're doing all the other trash cans, just makes it a little bit easier when you're already doing all that cleaning. Um, we were, are asking if it would be possible to install a water fountain with a refillable water bottle, um, like those little.
So you want a water cooler?
Not necessarily a water cooler, but like they're usually like in-wall units where you kinda just put in your water bottle and refill.
Like at the schools.
Yeah. Um, just seeing if, if that's an option. I know that costs money. If that's not something that the city can do, let us know. Either way, if you tell us yes or no, we can then get on that, 'cause if, we, we want one, so, but we have to get permission to do that. Um, as of April first, the library's hours are changing a little bit. We will be closing from one-thirty to two o'clock for lunch for our staff. Now, that being said, you can still use the library through expanded access hour cards, which allow you to use the library before we open and after we close, or whenever, like, or when we close down for lunch. The cards are basically just like staff badges. They're just blank on the other side. You just tap, tap them to lock, and it'll let you in. Those are free, just, anyone can get one. You just request it whenever you, you're at the library. Um, we are at Yelm doing movies in the library. That is something that if there's interest in that here in Taino, if we wanna collaborate and do after-hours movies, we can. There's a movie license that we would pay for, but we could do movies every day, whenever. There's a huge list of thousands of movies, including new releases. We already own the movies, or at least we have copies of them, so if we wanna do entertainment nights, family nights, that's an option. But obviously, we would be working extra hours doing that, but.
Movies in the rain.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, movies, no rain, and it's a nice little free entertainment for the community. Um, we, for the heat pump workshop that was mentioned earlier, we don't have anyone registered at this point. The event is on May sixth from six-thirty to seven-thirty PM. So you do have to attend the workshops in order to get a, uh, uh, basically a discount on the heat pumps, but for a family of one, if you make under ninety-four thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars, you can qualify for eighty to one-hundred percent of equipment and installation costs. So that's most people.
I guess that's most people.
So if, if you, if you know anyone that's looking for a heat pump, for a new AC, this is a great way to get it for free. That's on top of, you can also merge that with other incentives from like cities or from the power company. For jam, for example, Puget Sound Energy has a fifteen-hundred to twenty-four-hundred dollar rebate. So if there are any added costs, that's, you know, that would cover that. But it is eighty to a hundred percent of the installation and the equipment. And they provide the vendors, they provide the warranty, they provide the servicing, they, they do the installation. It is a no-brainer if you need a new AC to take advantage of that resource.
It's heat and AC too, so.
Well, like a heat pump, like I just, like I just paid thirty thousand dollars for.
That workshop is May sixth.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, you do have to register on Energize Thurston website, but like, something like that, that's a heat pump unit.
That's what they're doing, so, systems like this.
Yeah, so I highly encourage you guys to let people know. They can call the library and we'll tell them where to go, but I highly encourage it for the community to take advantage of that resource, because it's, it's that or paying ten grand for a new, a new AC someday.
Where, where you paying ten grand?
Well, yeah, I know, or whatever. I'm outdated on the cost, so, but that's all we have for the library.
I would just add on to the heat pump thing, there are.
Energize Thurston.
What is it?
Energize Thurston.
If you don't meet the income qualifications, whatever those are, there are also programs that will give you a discount, so even if you're looking for a system and you don't think you meet the income requirements, there's still advantages to go to this.
I cannot imagine a family being able to meet that dose, that income.
Yeah, that's.
I was told years ago when I was working with Jonathan from Habitat for Humanity, and I make a pretty good living being retired, he says, "Oh, you would, you would absolutely qualify for a Habitat for Humanity house."
I'm sure that'll be clarified. I'm sure it'll all be clarified at the workshop too, exactly what the incomes levels are.
I held a meet birthday really, means one, that I would be in.
Sure.
He's retired and he had to retire early, and so.
And so get the word out. I'll try to get it on our website and also post it on my Facebook and stuff.
I just paid twelve thousand this year.
Okay, Committees and Commissions. Civil Service Commission, they haven't met. Finance Committee, you may, should probably do one in April. I'm thinking, hopefully we'll get some.
What do you want?
Well, hold on one second.
Let's let them finish talking, so we can do our thing up here. Thank you.
That's all I have for the last.
You, you were at the study meeting. What'd you think of the new facility?
Uh, the new facility looks absolutely stunning. Looks like there, it actually gave me some ideas for businesses that are doing, but moving into that area of stuff that we could do. Um, there, there's like businesses that I discovered. For example, I know of one that was like a, a, there, there's a few businesses, like one that's, that does like hot sauces, that they mentioned, it's like, oh, we can do a hot sauce event, discovering new hot sauces and how they work, and talking about peppers, doing an event like that at the library. Um, you guys can then do, you know, for tourism, you, you could do a, a hot sauce festival. There's tons of fun stuff that you can do with, with that, so.
Basin, yeah.
It, it just allows for really cool collaborations with local businesses, but also community and more people coming in, because there's, I mean, there's a lot of awesome things going on, so more people coming in, and then finding places to hang out, which the library's a good place to hang out.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's, uh, it's good for everybody, so it's, the Ag Park looks like it's a well-worth investment in the community that's gonna pay off long, so.
Love it.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, the last meeting was canceled, so they'll have an upcoming meeting. Public Safety Committee, did anybody have anything there?
No.
Public Works, thank you. I think we talked about that last meeting, didn't we? Or did you, did you read?
Well, we had a meeting, but Troy was out ill, so we didn't.
Gotta reschedule.
Get that meeting done.
Okay.
We have to reschedule it now.
Uh, Staff Report, Chief of Police, I just talked to him this morning. He didn't have anything significant. Just so you know, the big news, I think recently was the person tagging all the vehicles in town with the black spray paint. They did catch that person, and he was charged with a felony. My son's car was one of them, so I did get a notice from the prosecutor's office asking if we wanted, you know, what we wanted, any reimbursement for our expenses to fix it and those kinda things, so the kid is, person's been caught and hopefully held accountable, but, yeah, that was unfortunate. He got quite a few cars, I think, and.
Yes, he did. I'm trying to think who it was I know that he got.
Uh, one was right over by Aslan's house.
Rachel, Rachel Davidson.
Oh, her, did she?
Yeah, yeah, got a couple of them there.
Yeah, so, yeah, unfortunate, but happens. And I'm gonna meet with them next Wednesday. I'm gonna go over when they have most of the staff there and have a, just go in and talk to them on, on there. We have both officers on during the day, so I'll be going over there next Wednesday. Public Works Director, Troy was out for quite a week, I think, almost, with pneumonia.
Oh, did he have pneumonia?
Think so, yeah. He was pretty sick, I think. He was back today and.
Three different steroids.
Yeah.
Three different what?
Steroids he was on to try to keep him.
Oh, my gosh, really?
So if you get sick and start having problems breathing, get on, get to your doctor quickly, 'cause it's, it's serious.
I have trouble breathing all the time.
Well, beyond what you're normal. Uh, we, I did tell you about the update for the Fire Department ready, so he's working on that. I think we're working on, he's making plans for the ball field, wastewater treatment plant, those kinda things. So he didn't say anything specific, but I know they're doing their normal day-to-day. Wastewater treatment plant, those kind of things, so he didn't say anything specific, but uh, I know they're doing their normal day-to-day stuff. Code enforcement building inspector, I told you what's going on with L G there, so next meeting we will bring. Bring you some type of resolution to uh bring on Brian to fill that position. Did you want to talk at all about that? Uh, we did get information for you about the signage thing, so I, if Maria wants to share that, we can. Share that with you.
So, um, being close to this paperwork I'm gonna give you is the um response from L G. I did clarify um that comment.
Thank you.
So to clarify Mr. Champagne's comment of the fees will be waived. Um, Mr. L G Nelson did clarify for the city that he does not have the authority to offer that to Mr. Champagne, and that was not. Um, part of their conversation. Um, he did say that the fees should be reduced to the same numbers I presented last time at the council meeting to. The total permit being eleven hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, so that would be. The plan review doubled as a penalty, the um, and the sign permit fee doubled as a penalty. Um, and then the rest of the cost would remain the same. Um, not be eliminated, not be reduced, but would remain the same. So that his entire permit would cost eleven hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, and so in your packet that I gave you is the email from L G. And then also, we did reach out to S T J to provide um context to their seven hundred and fifteen dollar fee. Um, for their part of the review from S T J Alliance. Um, Melissa Paulson provided a response, that's the third page of the packet that I gave you. Um, she did review that um, the the procedures that they went through are fairly standard. Um, that there was some complications based on the applicant's ability to provide information. Um, and challenges to their recommendations, and so that incurred some additional costs as far as. Conversations back and forth between the two of them, but it's provided there for you all to read.
And I would I would add, we didn't, I didn't, we didn't include it here, I looked in our municipal code. And there's pretty specific language on what is required for them for a sign, so. It was public information, what should have been provided initially that wasn't provided. And you can, I can show you that if you want to see what the code says as far as what's required.
Sure.
But uh.
And I believe in the early ra- uh, early emails from Rainey, that when he was speaking to them in like. August, September, before the permit was even applied for, um, there was some context in there about. What would be needed to apply for the permit and what kind of.
Have we put into place what I suggested about something when they come in to apply for these things? It's black and white, exactly, exactly how it's supposed to be, and they sign it? That they've read that and that they understand?
We have not adopted that yet at this time, we've not created that document. Um, still trying to figure out this situation and like see this through to see how. Where all of our shortcomings are coming from, right? I I I do give credit to Mr. Champagne for bringing this to our attention. It was not handled well by myself or by the city, because we don't have S O P operating procedures in place to deal with this, but. Um, and we will, we will create something, but we wa- I want to live through this first, I guess, and try to make sure that. Um, we we hit every, every item and make sure that we get it.
Question is though, is according to Mrs. Champagne, he called up many different places for comparables? And where the highest? Why would that be?
Um, I can't validate that because I haven't done my own research on that, so I don't know that that is true. Um, but I will tell you that I have heard that our city planner, S T J Alliance, is on. The higher end of the scale of professional services. Um, as far as our permit costs that are incurred by the city, so the plan review fees and the permit costs itself. That's standard with Thurston County. We've adopted their permit fee and we use their numbers, so if he's comparing to anybody in Thurston County, we're the same as Thurston County. Now, the city admin fee, um, which I believe he was only charged, yeah, he was only charged forty dollars, that was last year's. So the city makes an admin fee of forty dollars. That's to cover the costs of the city to process this. That's the only fee he was charged above and beyond, the state building code is twenty-five dollars. That money goes immediately to the state of Washington, and then there's a tech fee of two and a half percent. That was two dollars and twenty-five cents for a tech fee. That was to um keep the technology up to date in the building department. So I can't speak to anybody else because I don't have those numbers.
Thank you.
V F W was really shocked when they got their permit for the wall.
It was the same thing, the bigger, the biggest fee is the plan review fee.
Nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and they were totally shocked that it was that much.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think that.
And I don't remember how much their S T J portion of their fee was, but again, it's. We've raised the city fee um from forty dollars up, and then again, the Thurston County costs, their fee schedule for the building department is the same. So it's it's across the board is the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the only thing that would be different was the cost for S T J to do the reviews, so that's something the council can, we can review at some point.
Dan Panrol's work for S T J Alliance?
Dan Panrol's, that's him, yeah.
And he's our city planner, so it's kind of hard not to have S T J Alliance, since Dan Panrol's works for him.
So, something to keep in mind, if you want to look at, I, like I said, I think you're right, if you go to Rainier, they have the same fees. I think Dakota has the same fees, any, any of, all the small towns have the same basic plan review fees. It would be the city, the planner, whoever, whatever planner the city's using would be the the variable that would be different.
Would be, yeah, would be the S T J Alliance or whatever planner the the individual city chose to use.
Okay.
We'll keep on this, like you said, I I think it's a great idea to go through this, and I will mention that I didn't know this, I guess I should have. Uh, he hasn't even paid his basic fee yet.
He has paid no money towards this project yet, no deposit, um, in his.
Must be time to send him another bill.
Yeah.
Dave Champagne hasn't?
He has not paid the city any money for this permit. This permit is still completely unpaid.
Well, he probably is thinking he's gonna, that there would, that there's gonna be fees that are gonna be waived, so.
Yes.
Well, you think he pays basically.
I hope that's why.
What?
I hope that's why.
Yeah.
Oh, it is why, yeah.
So anyway, we'll work through it and like I I, Maria said, we will clean up and like you suggested.
We'll clean up the process, yeah.
We had a lot of changes with our, who's doing our work and stuff, so.
Sure. Anything else?
No, I'm glad that they came back with um third page here, because I knew there was, there had to be more to that than just hit reset.
I I mean, I can't ima- they're not gonna, they're not gonna falsify how many hours they spend on it, I know, I know their rate, their rate's higher than somebody, maybe some other.
There must be paying those people, bucko bucks per hour. And it took them, what, twelve hours?
Four and a half.
No, four and a half.
You missed out last time too.
Four and a half hours to.
It wasn't ten and a half that we thought it was, four and a half.
But even four and a half hours to look at.
It wasn't that simple.
You know, yeah.
So we'll work, we'll fix it.
Okay.
Rhonda, do you have anything that, just overall that you want to talk about? Uh, I know you're not. I didn't think so, but I want to make sure you didn't have anything. I kind of gave you my mayor's report when I uh, we did the work session, so I didn't really have anything additional there. We're almost at seven thirty anyway, B that, was there any meetings with B that?
Oh, there was a virtual meeting, and I have some notes here they sent me. Um, a note about Earth Day, uh, as Jessica mentioned, on April the nineteenth, uh, they're gonna be out there. Um, their next meeting is at the middle school on the twenty-first at five P M. We still have that medicine take-back event at the Tenino Police Department, that'll be uh four twenty-six. From ten to two. And a parenting class called Guiding Good Choices starts in May at five thirty P M. Another hidden in plain sight event where they set up a teenager bedroom and. Challenge you to find all the spots that are the indications that there is uh drug abuse or other other. Behavior going on, so if you haven't done that, that might be kind of fun. That's what I have for B that.
Okay, uh, since we got just a couple of minutes, if we can go down to legislature, uh, since we were talking about the police earlier, this made me think. There are bills in in the legislature right now to, for addition, two bills, I think.
There's two of them left, yeah, two of them that are still moving along, not the fifty, sixty that the governor wanted. It seems to be stalled, of course you.
You never know with those.
Well, you can't say, see, if it's necessary to implement the budget, they don't go away until the last shiny dive gavel comes down. So they're there, if, and and a lot of those bills are necessary to implement the budget, so. That's one of the reasons I haven't been bringing reports, just because they're, we're kind of in limbo when it comes to things like that.
So those are.
And the levy lid tax thirteen thirty-four was the bill number and it gone nowhere. But there is another bill, Public Education Bill thirteen fifty-six that. Uh, has that same language, very small, in very small writing. That they lifted from a one percent to a three percent lid for the property taxes. But I think what people don't understand is they can't go any higher than three percent, and the cities and counties don't have to charge that. It's not something that's, it's gonna be three percent, you can go up to three percent.
Just like it used to be.
Yeah, exactly, and that's another reason that they're doing it, is because that's exactly the way it used to be. It was three percent across the board, it wasn't. They they couldn't go any higher, but they had to get three percent, so they lowered that at some point, I don't remember.
That was the initiative.
There was a ten million thing.
Yeah, and then, but now, yeah, now it's uh, it can go up to three percent, but it doesn't, you don't have to. So let's say we had, it it passed, and we thought maybe we could get. One and a half percent instead of one percent of the property tax, you know, it would help a lot in our situation if we could do that, so. But I'll 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 have an update on those other two bills for the the safety bills, they're called.
Yeah, so anyway, we're watching those because that will have a big uh influence on our ability to hire uh additional officers. If any of those pass, so we can get some additional revenue there.
Yeah, and because there, a couple of them are good, they'll pay quite a little bit, like seventy-five percent or sixty, well, that that was fifty, five zero, six zero. The other two are, I'm trying to think, I think one number is twelve fifteen, I think. Um, but I'll I'll get a, my handle on that before the next council meeting.
Okay, we just got a few uh short time left, there it is. It is seven thirty, so we'll call to order the regular meeting of the City of Tenino for March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, please stand for the flag. Jason, you want to start?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Okay, first thing is agenda approval, Rhonda, were you able to get the updated, updated uh fee schedule? Did you get the right one printed or not?
Yeah, Maria, I handed it out to you. I've got it.
I'll watch it, okay, I'm, for some reason, I don't see, there's under my. So. So the first thing on the agenda is agenda approval, I was just gonna recommend we take the uh, we didn't get that new correct fee schedule, but it looks like we have it, so. Anybody want to approve our, approve our agenda?
Have you been approved and seconded?
It's been first and seconded already.
I was talking to myself, I didn't hear what everybody else was saying. It's been approved, I mean moved and seconded to approve the agenda, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes?
They approved first and seconded, I'm sorry, okay.
Uh, approval of minutes, approval of the minutes from three eleven twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from three eleven twenty twenty-five, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Consent calendar, consent calendar for March twelfth, twenty twenty-five to March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Consisting of payroll E T Fs in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Claims checks numbers three three zero zero seven four through three three one zero one. And E F Ts in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents. For a grand total of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And I don't believe there's any cannabis or liquor license approvals.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No executive session, presentations, public comments, this is the first opportunity for public comments, there'll be another at the end of the meeting. Any public comment? One more chance, okay, no public hearings, no old business, new business. Uh, in the packet, there should be an application from a person that wishes to join the planning commission. Uh, reviewing it, he seemed to be very well qualified, uh, with a lot of experience and. So we're asking that you approve this gentleman for.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of William Bennett the second to position three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be nice to get that one filled so they can still have a meeting if somebody's gone. Uh, the next thing is Carol Solar requests to remove late fee. On this one, I believe this person has had some major illnesses and missed uh, and some property damage that she had been worried about. And asking for a, she got a late fee, I think she was only had forty-eight dollars or forty-nine dollars was the amount that she hadn't paid. Uh, and so she's asking that the council uh forgive her late, her forty-dollar late fee on that small amount.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request to remove the late fee for Carol Solar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the next one is the ball field discussion that we had with Jessica, this is uh basically the contract we have previously approved accepting the grant. And this is actually the contract with the state to, for this work.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize for engineering services uh for the City of Tenino, baseball field drainage design services. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next one is another late fee request, this one is a little bit different.
He wrote a little note.
Huh?
This man wrote a little note, well, it's not here, of course, I haven't made the.
It's on, it's on here.
There it is, right there, yeah.
So you can see that, uh, I talked to Rhonda about this one, the difference is this person is quite often. Late or comes in at the last minute and pays her fee, so this is not quite the same situation. Rhonda, do you want to speak a little bit about?
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Since Rhonda's deal, deals with pretty much want to do, quickly say, tell us what the situation.
They've been late numerous times and they're always want to, us to remove that fee. So I don't, I was gonna run the history so you could see and I failed.
I feel like this happened before, they came to us before, a while ago, yeah.
So.
So it's up to.
I feel like it's seen in a movie, do not.
I mean, I like to have compassion for people that have hardship or something happens that's kind of out of their control.
You want to see it. You wanna see it?
Do you got it? You wanna see it?
I mean, they were open on the seventh.
Yeah, she, they could've taken care of it.
But the due date is on the tenth.
They probably could've, you know, and, and I
You know, I know paying taxes for the State Department of Revenue that if it's due on the day, the day is a Sunday or whatever, it's, it's pushed over another day. That's not a common rule.
Well, and, and it's not, and like, if, if she could've paid it on the seventh, yes, well, maybe she didn't have the money on the seventh and maybe she would've on the tenth, you know, I just, I, I don't know.
I, I personally have a little bit of a hard time if somebody's, I, I think it just encourages people that have already not paid them on time, you know, if it's a one-time thing or a couple of times, somebody has a
But has she, is she continually having late fees continually?
I don't know, every time.
Well, I think there's another, and, and those are valid points, those are good points, but there's a, uh, administrative issue here. When, when the due date falls on a, a day that the city's not open, are we gonna penalize people who were trying to pay at the last moment?
Did she come in on Tuesday and paid her bill? I think it says she paid, she, she tried to pay on Monday, it says, or to look on it. But she paid a hundred and fifty dollars of
Yes, I cannot see how much is owed online. Can she view her bill online?
No.
No?
There's no online
So there's no online viewing, so why would she even?
She can't pay your bill online if you don't know how much
Excuse me, Ronna? It says here, I never received a bill for the current amount due, so I paid a hundred and fifty of it. Did she ever receive the bill? You sent it.
Out, the bills didn't come back, so I don't know. I can't
But you sent the bill.
But we mailed the amount to them. So I can run downstairs and make a copy of the history. I didn't wanna put it in the packet. I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
But you want me to run that?
Yeah.
No, not necessary. But you know, I, my, my opinion is that if the due date falls on a day when the city's not open, that we ought to push that for another, the next
There's a drop box right outside too. They don't have to come into the city to pay it.
I'm wondering if we
Good point.
If there's a caveat that, that if it ever happens again, forget it. Don't even ask us, cause we're not gonna take it away.
We can say anything we want to, I mean, I think.
What, at what date is a bill late?
Due?
It's, it's late on the tenth of the following month. So it's due the thirty-first of the same month they give the bill. And then late the following month on the tenth.
So they have
And if we're closed, if it lands on the Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they have the following day because we're closed.
They're coming to do
Open for them to come in and pay.
And the drop box.
In this case, it was the other month that
I ain't know come to think of that.
We didn't, we didn't have a notice long till
I mean, in March.
I don't know, I pay mine before I get it, so I don't know.
So, uh, what's the council's pleasure on this one?
Well, I, I motioned earlier to deny.
Well, there's been a motion. Is there a second to deny it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the removal of the late fee on this one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to deny. Uh, RCO grant agreement. This is the one that Jessica just talked about, uh, for the ball, ball field.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the grant agreement, uh, for the RCO ball field. Is there any discussion? This was kind of got this last minute. Sorry, I know that was a big, a big one to throw at you at the last minute, but, uh,
It's not really last minute. I've known about it for about a year.
Well, it's been going on, yeah. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess we'll go ahead and let you assign it to, that's the next one.
No, this is the city trail.
The city trail. The next one's a city park trail. This is the other one that Jessica talked about, the three thousand, up to three thousand maximum for doing some trail work up on our property.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the city park trail maintenance agreement. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The last one, got a lot of them tonight. Tenino farmer's market request, the use and block off of Olympia Street, uh, for the special events fee. They're asking us to waive the special events fees. We've done this, I think, every year that I've been around. So, uh, they're asking again for us to waive the event fee for the
Didn't we discuss this earlier or about charging them for? I just don't think that it, I think it's very bad business to be charging them. They bring a lot of people into Tenino that spend money in Tenino. And if we want sales tax, you're, you're defeating your purpose. I mean, I think that they're there every Saturday from Mother's Day through the end of September. And I really and truly think that
Even though it's costing the
Just a little background history on that.
It's costing the city for utilities. Uh, we asked Troy about it and he said
Is it really, really, really expensive?
He said it's about fifty dollars.
A week?
A month.
A month?
So that's why I brought it up.
Just, just to add a little context, years ago, we went through conversations along this line. And the, what we decided as a council at that point is if it was a benefit to the city that we wouldn't charge them the fee. If it was just a one-time thing, that was different. Because it wasn't benefiting the city all the time, like the farmer's market does. So I would say go ahead and I, I will move to not charge the farmer's market.
And second, a second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
One minute. Do a little math here.
While he's doing that, I, I will say we did, uh, this, I don't know, this is what you're thinking about Oregon Trail days. Last year, they did pay their fees for this and they volunteered to do that again. I don't know if this is, if this is separate.
That's wonderful. They make tons of money too.
So anyway, I don't know if that's what you're thinking about, but, uh, it wasn't, was there a separate
Well, the thing is, see, the farmer's market, the only money that they make, the actual market makes, is whatever fee they charge for the vendors to set up. And I think it's
It's near nothing anyway, yeah.
You know, so they're not making any big money, so.
No, I, I realize that.
A, a question, who is, how, how much of the sales tax do we, does the city get?
Eight point three.
That's, that goes to the county.
That's ours, that's it.
Now, a big portion of that goes to the, the, the county.
Our portion is like, uh,
One point.
One point something, yeah, one percent.
One point something. And it, yes, it does need to be raised.
Okay, so we make, what, nine hundred dollars off that?
Probably.
And we spend in, what, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars in utilities?
Four, two hundred maybe, May, June, July, August, September, five, yeah, two fifty.
Okay, so we, we're still coming out ahead a little bit. Um, and I don't know, not everything's sold, you know, the farm market, the food there, there's no tax on that. It, it's down in the minutia. There's enough money that we're, we're coming out ahead of this.
Yeah.
So I, I agree with you on that, that it's a benefit to the community.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution number twenty-five oh three. Hopefully we got the right one now.
I just still wanna go over these. I just don't.
Well, yeah, what happened is we missed a couple of things on this that was noticed, uh, on the second page, the city hall council, we forgot to put a deposit in there. I mean, these are smaller, smaller things. Uh, I mean, we can still talk about the fees overall, but we wanna at some point say, hey, this fee seems to be too much or some of those kind of things. But these were just things we missed. We saw that we had missed. They're kind of small, small changes.
I was gonna say, did all the fees increase or did they?
No, I think the only ones that I, I'll, and I'll go over them, is the city hall council chamber rental. We didn't have, we added the hundred dollar, hundred dollars
Right.
On the second page. That was not in the original one. On the park fees, uh, because we did not, we're not having any individual campers anymore. It's just gonna be, you can rent the whole site. We took those out, so there's not any confusion. People look at this and say, hey, I can I rent this camping fee for a single person? So we removed the, all the single camper stuff and just kept the premium sites. And let's see, where's another one? Fire marshal services, hopefully that added on there. If not, it's, uh, we didn't have any, since we just got the fire marshal recently, that was not on there.
Some page five oh seven.
Five of seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the changes we made on this. On this copy. Like I said, I know there's people have brought questions up about other fees, uh, on there. But I think if, if there's concerns about what we're charging for some of these other things, I'm more than willing to have a discussion and talk about those, but, uh, these are just overs, small oversights that we needed to clean up, just so it was clear.
I think the chamber involved in too many things. It's either Splash Bash Committee or Chamber. I think Splash Bash is gonna donate a day, or maybe opening day, June, yeah, twenty-first.
Like it did last year, yeah. Any, uh, is there a motion to accept that or do you wanna?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the changes to the, uh, fee schedule, twenty, resolution twenty-five oh three. Is there any other discussion?
Um, it, this fire marshal service, that's in addition to the current, um, permit fees?
The fire marshal fee is a separate fee, so if he comes in and if there's a, because our current, uh, plan reviewer cannot do fire, he's not, there's not fire, like in the Ag Park, when they had put in their, this is common, this happens basically in, in every place that I've
But it's not for every permit, just for certain ones that were, that were, that involved the fire.
Yeah, like if they have fire sprinklers out at the Ag Park.
And we have to pay this. We have to pay this.
Yeah, we would have, I mean, they couldn't get, they couldn't get approval for occupancy without having this done. It's like, uh, in their cooking system out there, they have the big overhead things with, so it's those kind of things that are beyond. It's not everybody that does a, a project.
Okay.
It's only special and it's at his, our request. We request him when we need him. So
And then we, we, we cover the
Yeah.
The fees.
His fee, I think we charge what he charged, what he charges.
If he's working for a citizen or a business in town,
They have to pay that.
They will pay those.
Yeah.
Do they pay him or do they pay us?
No, they, they pay back to the city and then add some, it's a bill to us for his services.
Gotcha. Okey-dokey.
Okay.
So like we have some new businesses coming into town like Egan's. Egan's is moving from one location to the other. And so they called Matt. They made arrangements to have a fire marshal come out to make sure that their new location was suitable or any of the upgrades that needed to be handled. And so he went and walked the building with them. And that'll be part of their billing permit. This fire marshal services will be an additional line item on that.
Yeah, gotcha.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can we do that? I forget. Maybe we already did. Okay, that is the regular stuff. We'll go back to the reports, uh,
Solid waste.
Yeah, solid waste advisory committee?
That, that report is not until the first week of April.
Yeah, I thought you did it last week. Uh, TCOM nine-one-one, anything there? School board?
I don't have anything.
I've got some. The school board meeting was last night, um, at the, uh, Tenino Elementary School. And the teachers there did their presentations about what they're doing and, and, uh, all good stuff. The administration is still working with a tight budget, but they're getting through. They still don't need to, see any need for reduction in, in R I F. Reduction in force, reduction in faculty. So, uh, kudos to them for keeping the school district going at a time when school districts all over the state are having troubles. Working with that. There was a student, uh, the student representative to the school board, a high school student. They do surveys of the kids throughout the various schools. And one of the things I came up with was a feeling among the kids of a lack of respect in the schools, uh, kids not respecting each other. And so it's something that's a little concerning to, of course, the teachers and, and parents. And just to remind people, be kind to your kids and teach them to be kind. You know, it, it just all follows through and school can be tough enough without having to deal with, uh, disrespect or the feeling of being disrespe, disrespected by your peers. Just a, a note there. Um, also, I had the opportunity to tour the high school. Um, uh, Mr. Scott Hyder, the principal, walked me around. Something I've been trying to do. That's the, uh, 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 school district liaison. It's just, just go see the facilities and meet some of the people. Um, they've been doing a lot of work there. The principal has in getting the, the place redecorated and looking nice and, and the students themselves are participating in, in, uh, some of the creations and artwork and memorials and medals and everything they've been doing there. So it's looking really nice. One, one thing, oh, uh, uh, I shouldn't know this or I forget. Uh, one of, one of the welding students is going to state, uh, for competition. Usually we hear about our, our, our athletic department. There's so many, so much talent there. It's, it's, uh, worth remembering that we've got talented students all across the board here, here in Tenino. School's aging and at some point, um, that's gonna come up before the, the voters. There's something to keep in the mind and I, and I hope the parents and people who've had kids go through and even if you haven't had kids, I think everyone understands how important having a good education for the children is, are uh, going forward for our entire community. Uh, something to keep in mind when, uh, that, that comes time to replace that school, that we have that same support. That you've always shown with the, uh, the other programs that we have here. Um, so there's my soapbox for the schools tonight. Um, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, public comment too. Anybody wanna speak on anything?
We just keep looking at you because you're the public.
The public's right, yeah. We're not putting you on the spot or anything.
Oh, yes, we are.
Okay, hearing none. Any announcements? Oops, sorry. Caught me again. Oh, we did. This is a very easy one, uh, at the park. I don't know, I thought it was on our list. Did I miss it? The, uh, the part of the RCO grants that we got in the past does not allow easements on our, some of our park, park property that was purchased after a certain date. We have easements from Warehouser back in, I don't remember what year it was, it was way back that they had, when they had the property up behind the pool up there, it was Warehouser property. They had some easements down past the, right there by the, uh, uh, I think it's by the museum. So this is a very simple thing. Since we own both of the properties now, we don't even have to go through much of a process. We just have to officially accept removal, removal of those easements. So we can file it with auditor to get those removed. It just helps with our grants because we have those on there and RCO is always questioning, questioning them. This has been going on for years and we finally figured out how to get it done. So, uh, this wasn't in the packet, but this is, it doesn't even involve anybody from the outside. It's just the city filing the proper paperwork to remove, remove those. There's two of them that need to be removed on that property. So if you're willing to look at that, uh, it's nothing critical. So if you don't wanna do it, that's fine, but, uh, until next meeting, we can put it off. It's been years and years and years that they've been there.
Bring it up at the next meeting, show it to the board.
Yeah, let's do that because I'm not, um, because it's not on the agenda.
I know. Yeah, we, we approve the agenda. So we'll just, uh,
It would, it will, we'd had to approve it with an amendment.
It's not, it's nothing critical. So like I said, we'll just read it on the next agenda. Uh, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect anything at all.
Announcements?
Announcement, yeah.
Um, Thurston County has Washington State's Teacher of the Year.
We do?
Yes, we do. She's, she's from Rochester Middle School.
Oh, cool. Who is it?
I don't remember her name. I don't remember her name.
I know a teacher from there, that's why I'm asking.
She's, um, she was awarded, she was given that award by the VFW, um, state.
Really?
Yeah, so, yay. Yeah, I just thought it was nice that she was from Thurston County.
Very nice, in a little town in Rochester.
Yes.
I do know a teacher from there, and I'm not sure she teaches middle school.
Math teacher.
Oh, interesting.
Any other announcements?
Well, a quick question. I, I noticed the prevent child abuse pinwheels in progress.
Yeah. She, uh, I, I had sent him a message saying we had adopted the resolution, I think, at our last meeting, or the meeting before. I don't know if the word got to this specific lady that we had done that. So she was here, and she decided, since we had already adopted it, uh, that she just left her pinwheels and decided to, to go home.
Well, it's, you should, we should encourage her to speak anyway.
Yeah, I told her to come, just tell us what they're, you know, but she chose not to. I did encourage her to stay.
I'm glad she didn't, she had my apartment place.
Yeah. Anything else?
Say your words.
No, I'm gonna make you wait, John. Meeting's adjourned.